Good evening and welcome to our September Smyrna Town Council meeting. I will call our meeting to order. And tonight, Chaplain Bob Horn with our Smyrna Police Department is going to do our prayer, and our pledge is going to be done by Assistant Town Manager Rex Gaither. If you'll stand with us, please.
Father, we're indeed thankful for a wonderful day of life that you've allowed us to be here. We pray to your Father as we gather ourselves together to conduct the business of this town that those that are in leadership may do the things that are wise for the those citizens that live here. We're thankful to have a place that that others can call home. We're thankful for those that are moving into the area, that they look for that hope and encouragement of the community around them. Pray that you continue to guide us and strengthen us in all that we do as we look unto thee. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Thank you, Rex. Chaplain, also want to say thank you for our little surprises on our desk. We appreciate that. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Peoples. Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell.
Present.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the August 8th regular meeting and August 24th work session meeting and the August 29th 2023 special called meetings of the Town Council. Jeff, are these in order?
No rest of the floor, ma'am.
Counsel, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Correspondents and communications, Brian?
Go ahead.
Okay, then we'll move on to awards and recognitions. And tonight, we have a really, really special recognition. Tonight, we have a birthday boy in the house. And Mr. Edwin Bell will be turning 100 years old on September 19th, 2023. And I want to tell you a little bit about Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell's a World War II veteran. He is a former B-17 bomber radio operator with experience in over 35 combat missions. He and his spouse, Ms. Edith, who is now deceased, served three tours of duty at Seward Air Force Base, and he is a member of the American Legion Post 288 here in Smyrna. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Bell and the council if you can come forward so we can present you your certificate. And counsel, if you'll come down as well for the picture. We want you to come up so you can get on TV. Now, you told me a while ago you could dance a little bit, so are we going to dance? Not today. Did you leave your dancing shoes at home?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Can you turn around for us so the group can see you and you can see everybody? Can you face that way?
Okay.
If you can do that?
Yeah.
Now, I need your y'all's help because I think at 100 years old, he needs to hear sing "Happy Birthday" sung to him. So if we all can sing "Happy Birthday," are we ready?
Yeah.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Bell. Happy birthday to you.
Well, it looks like he brings the paparazzi when you come. Look at all those people out there making pictures.
Yeah. It looked like we got some more folks here that got on their decorations.
We sure do, and we appreciate each one of you and the service that you have performed to this country, and we appreciate you from the town of Smyrna, and we just want to say happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Okay, okay.
I so appreciate them all being here and to think about all that Mr. Bell's seen over 100 years and the things that have changed. So we appreciate him being here and able to be able to honor Mr. Bell.
Mary Esther, when in 1970, we bought a farm out on Shirley Lane, and we were blessed to have Mr. Bell as our neighbor right next door. And he's one of those fellows that had a lot of wisdom. And I always enjoyed sitting and listening to him tell stories, and it's been a privilege to know Mr. Bell.
Now, you say it was a privilege to have him as a neighbor. Would he have said the same thing about not necessarily your family, but you?
Yes.
Because he was being kind?
Because he was being kind.
Being kind, that's right.
I learned a lot about being a neighbor from Mr. Bell. I mean, you know, if you borrow something, you bring it back in better shape than you took it. I distinctly remember that, you know, that one thing from Mr. Bell, and that's just part of being, you know, a good neighbor.
Isn't it interesting, the memories we have growing up of neighbors, and you hope that that's the same thing that people live next door to each other now are still doing?
Yep.
So, okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing discussion, but if there's an item that a council member would like to pull off and vote on individually, we can do that. But I do always like to read the consent agenda so that those in the audience, as well as those at home, know exactly what we're voting on. So our first one is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a one-year contract for the purchase of seven new cameras through Flock Safety. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an amendment to the contract for the ITS phases three, four, and five to extend the date of completion to September 31st, 2024. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with S&amp;W Contracting to relocate existing fiber lines. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the annual stormwater report submission to TDEC. Item E is the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number three with clear construction for the Genie Lane Extension Project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the scope and fee proposal with energy, land, and infrastructure for the weekly lane improvements project. And the last item is item G, which is the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a development agreement with Blakeney Commons LLC relative to the road impact fee offsets for the Blakeney Commons Development. Counsel, is there anything you want to discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Tonight, under old business, we just have one public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 50, parcel 14.00, to go from C2 to I2. It's requested by Rashish Shaw. The property requested to be rezoned contains 9.88 acres and is located on Tridenton Drive and Safari Drive. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor, that request has been withdrawn.
Okay. So Jeff, what do we need to do in regards to vote if it's been withdrawn?
If it's been withdrawn by the applicant, then you would not have to move.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll move on to our new business under Planning Commission report. Item one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of properties located on Tax Map 51, parcels 8.07 and 8.18. It's requested by Matt Huff on behalf of two different property owners containing 34.48 acres. The properties are located at 6554 and 6588 Lee Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is a request for annexation with a PRD zoning. It is on Lee Road, it's about 4,200 feet east of the intersection with Cook's Lane. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PRD, which is the Gwyn Farms PRD in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. They have indicated there is adequate domestic flow in this area, but not fire flow. Staff did receive a well-served letter from CUD, which details the requirements of the developer to correct this fire flow deficiency. There are two existing houses which would be annexed with this request, and both would be removed as a part of the development. And as a part of this request, staff did recommend annexation of approximately 5,814 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Lee Road from Montgomery Way to the westernmost edge of Tax Map 51, parcel five, which is the Gwyn Farms development. This proposed PRD is for 100 single-family lots. Their houses would be a maximum of 2,400 square feet for the 45-foot-wide lots and 3,000 square feet for the 55-foot-wide lots. They did not provide a minimum size. All homes would have a two-car garage. The materials would be a mix of brick, stone, and cement siding, and all requirements of the town with regards to open space, parking, and setbacks would be met. One access point is shown to Lee Road with a stub street to the west, north, and east. Traffic study was submitted. The study did recommend no improvements to Lee Road, but did recommend adding a right turn lane on Montgomery Way at its intersection with Rock Springs Road. Town engineer Charles King reviewed the study and did recommend that the developer not be required to make this improvement due to it being an existing issue. It's not something that's been created by this development. He did concur with the recommendation regarding Lee Road. He did recommend that the road exiting the project be required to be constructed with two exiting lanes and not just a single lane, as shown. The Planning Commission did review this, did request, did recommend approval, as well as the staff's recommendation regarding Lee Road as well. As 541 against, with two connections, two conditions, the road connection at Lee Road must be built with two exiting lanes, and the requirement of the traffic study regarding the improvement to Montgomery Way would not be required, and that the required minimum fire flow is our standard requirement of 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. CUD has indicated that this fire flow cannot be met at this time. No subdivision class can be approved until a timeline for improvements to correct this issue has been established. And with those conditions, staff would recommend approval.
Anything you want to add to this?
I'm going to abstain on this. I'll let Tim speak to it.
Okay.
Yeah, at Planning Commission, we looked at this, and knowing the growth pattern that we're seeing here, we were satisfied that we have enough and will have enough access with the stubs that are there. The additional exit lane is most helpful as well. The PRD itself is consistent with surrounding zoning, and that was why the Planning Commission voted to approve this.
Did y'all have any discussion? I know we had talked about staff looking at coming up with a formula for improvements at intersections. Did y'all look at any of that and have discussion about that for intersection with this one?
I'll let Kevin.
We did discuss it a little bit at the Planning Commission. Mr. Hercules and I talked a little bit this week, and he had had a discussion at a meeting with regarding another city in our area who does some of that. I've reached out to them, I haven't heard back from them yet. We are, so we are beginning in that process to work on that, yes.
So I guess my question, Tim and even Mark, not so much about individually this project, but as a whole, until we can get that formula done, is that something we probably need to look at voting that their percentage of improving that intersection is something that we need to put in our motion and do?
You know, without the road, for me, without the road being engineered to know what we're looking at, I'm not quite sure we're there. And I don't know if it was, if it's appropriate at this point, you know?
Mayor, that was my question as well, because in watching the meeting, Mr. Bear talked about the proportional cost sharing and how to attribute those costs. And so my question was, if we vote on this now and approve it, how do we make provision to be able to go and address that later if we didn't actually vote on it at the time this was happening? So I had the same concerns that you did.
So Kevin kind of talked me through the process in regards to if we made the motion with doing the, doing it with the formula that's going to be put in place, how much of an issue is that going to be?
I think it can be done. I think you're, I don't know, you would have to, I hate to put something on a developer without knowing exactly what we're talking about, I guess, as far as, you know, dollar amount we're talking about per lot or whatever it ends up being, because we really don't know at this point what the improvements would be and how much those improvements would cost. So...
But how many more developments do we allow in?
Oh, I understand where you're coming from in that regard.
Before that, you know what I mean? So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
Well, I'm not speaking on this particular one, but you asked me the question. How many developments have already come in that wouldn't pay a dime?
Agree. But how long are you going to let the donkey stay in the dish?
Well, I think that's part of the whole traffic study program that we've put in place. It kind of sounds to me a little bit like we don't even want to trust traffic studies anymore. We want to mandate what we do regardless. So if we're going to mandate traffic studies and then not want to adhere to those traffic studies, sort of a slippery slope, I think, from the standpoint of development. I'm not saying right or wrong. I think we all missed the big boat with Greystone. That's where we messed up. We have to admit that.
But you know, the business talking about improvements at Montgomery Way and Rock Springs Road, which is over the hill and far away. So, I mean, how, when did that need arise for that intersection improvement to be done? I mean, and it's only going to, as more subdivisions develop around this, it's only going to become more and more needed. So is it one of those things that we, as a town, need to take a look at because we have waited so long? I mean, my impression is if it, if they're saying it needs it because of this subdivision, it just seems far out. It just seems really far out for that because it's so far away.
Yeah, and I think the study actually says it's something that needs to be done even without this development.
Right.
I guess when Charles made the recommendation, he made regarding it. So that's something, when did it become an issue? I don't know. That's the first time I'm aware of it being looked at or being identified as part of a traffic study that it needs to be done. You know, and until you get another connection connecting Rock Springs to Lee Road, which will eventually happen when Gwyn Farms develops out and things like that, it's probably not going to get any better because that's the only real direct connection currently. I mean, there will be, there's Green Tree and through Gwyn Farms, there's going to be other connections, but there's not one directly through there at this time.
So what would your recommendation be to us?
Yeah, again, I just feel I would like to have something in place before we make a condition of approval. That's maybe my recommendation. That's certainly, this council can do what you wish on that.
And an estimation on that timeframe?
And I made contact today, so...
But once you get that information from them, how long would you think that?
I think once we know what, at least get an idea of what other communities around us are doing with that regard, I don't think it'll take us that long to put something together.
Okay. Okay.
I have questions about this one. Kevin, if this was not a PRD, this would be R3, is that correct?
Well, the minimum lot, they're not 10,000 square foot lots, but from a density standpoint, yes, it'd be very similar to an R3.
Yeah. The area between Phase One and Phase Two, is that the peak of the hill there?
I don't have that, trying to me, small. I think there is actually, if my memory is right, I think there's actually a...
Drainage ditch?
Drainage easement ditch, not an easement, but there's an area there that kind of has, that area in the middle is actually a kind of a creek or weather conveyance or something like that. So I believe it's all sewed through, it will be sewed through all the branch, come back to the main, the main that we conduct. They have to do an off-site sewer extension to get to all the branch, but...
It will drain to all the branch, though?
Yes, that's where the sewer would come. Yeah, that phase line is, that's really the, that's really the bottom of the hill, I guess you would say, not the top.
So do we consider deferring this a month to give time for, is that enough time?
It's got to go through second reading, so we could do it on second reading. I hate to delay them because we've not, we've not gotten our stuff together yet, so... How do you all feel?
I think they presented a subdivision to us that is consistent with what's surrounding. They're making the suggested improvements that our staff has asked for in conjunction with the traffic study. I'm ready to move forward with it. And with Kevin, and that was what, you know, I was stating on the front end here, I don't know how we proportion something that we don't even know what we're proportioning at this point.
Okay. Not that you're not for proportioning, you're just not for proportioning this one right now? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm still deciding on the proportioning.
Okay.
And I say that because I say that with the full expectation that impact fees will be collected here, just as they're collected with from the others. I don't know what the final, you know, count's going to be as far as what we can expect from an impact fee perspective that would, could be dedicated to this roadway year. So to me, it's looking at impact fees and then looking at the overall growth pattern and if there is some difference, and having some discussion along those lines.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Okay, we've heard from Kevin and Tim. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to move to approve, subject to staff comments.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do we have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Motion and a second, other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcels 40.00, 41.00, 44.00, 44.01, and 45.00, requested by Jennifer Speck on behalf of the property owners containing 39.65 acres. The properties are located at 8613 and 8675 Rocky Fork Amville Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is an annexation request on Rocky Fork Amville Road. It's about 700 feet north of the intersection with Morton Lane. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is PRD in town, which is three different PRDs, Blakeney and the courtyard of Stewart's Creek, I'm sorry, two PRDs, and then RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services except for water, which would be provided by CUD, and they have indicated there is adequate fire flow in this area. There are two existing houses which would be annexed with this request, and both would be removed as a part of the development. This proposed PRD is for 33 townhomes and 80 single-family lots. The houses would be a minimum of 1,650 square feet and average 2,250 square feet. All the single-family homes have two-car garages, the townhomes would have one-car garages. The materials would be a mix of brick, stone, and cement board siding, and all requirements of the town with regards to open space, parking, and setbacks would be met. One access point is shown to Rocky Fork Amville Road. There would be connections to Blakeney at two locations, as well as a street stub to the vacant tract to the north as well. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request with five conditions. One, just, first one is regarding fire hydrants, and in all portions of the townhomes must be within 150 feet of the fire truck access. And then we did ask them to, there's a hydrant shown, we'd ask them to move it near the road, near Unit 96. Sheet C 2.0 and 6.0 are inconsistent as to the setback for townhomes, and we'd ask them to make those consistent, and sheet C 6.0 is shown correctly. They had a note about porches may be, may be impeding the setbacks, and we just made a note that they are required to meet the setbacks if they have a roof, and that's a requirement on fire flow is our standard comment there, and then that we would, there are, some of these lots are probably going to end up being critical lots because of some topography issues. And so we did say that we would identify those at the flimmy plats stage. So with those conditions, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, just looking at the pictures, is the density higher here than it is, everything around it?
It's pretty consistent. The Blakeney Development, which is directly adjacent to it that it would be connecting to, is also very similar lot sizes, as well as some townhomes in the mix. The Blakeney Commons, which is across the street, is an all-townhome project. Westover and Saddle Grove are all single-family, so it's very much consistent with what's nearby. The property to the west is the 55 and up development that was approved a few months ago. So it's pretty similar to what's around it.
Other questions for Kevin?
All of the area back in the back, what does it call it, a state lot on here?
Yeah, it's one large lot, yeah.
I see, there's a retaining wall, I suspect it goes uphill, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know if they have any, like, plans to do anything with it?
I think it's meant to be one single lot, so you would have one house on it. My assumption is that house would be close to where the cul-de-sac access would be, and the rest of it's going to be pretty much left alone. But it'll be up to that homeowner, obviously, but it would just be that one lot. But it'll be up to that homeowner, obviously, but it would just be that one lot.
Is the Jobe Cemetery up there? That is where it's at?
I believe it's, I believe it is, yes.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I will move to approve with the staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item three, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements by negotiation or condemnation for the purpose of carrying out the Fall Creek Basin Sewer Project. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request or mandatory referral that came to planning commission and now coming to you all. The town is preparing to obtain easements for the extension of sanitary sewer into the Fall Creek drainage basin. This would extend public sewer to the Mona Road and Bill France Boulevard area near the Nashville Superspeedway. A developer will be constructing the sewer extension, but the town will be acquiring the easements. We did attach the maps that show the proposed route and the parcels that would be affected by these easements. The planning commission did review this, did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this one?
Kevin, I looked at the, at the map, kind of familiar with that area. I understand it's going out Mona Road. When it gets to the golf course, it will go to the left at the golf course, then straight on out that direction, correct?
Correct.
This shows up a little different. So the map shows it a little different. It doesn't go all the way to Mona Road down Jefferson Pike. It joins Mona Road at the golf course.
Mm-hmm.
But as long as the map's right, it doesn't matter.
If the map's right, it crosses the interstate there at 266.
Yeah, it kind of goes left, right?
Kind of goes left, and it'll come into that, kind of at that S curve, I think, is where it comes in, right at the golf course, and then it will stay on the left side of Mona Road up to the basin, so...
So, people on Mona Road, before you get to the golf, to the golf course, would not have access to it, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the developer's going to be doing the, paying for the construction of it, but we're paying for the easements?
We're paying for the easement acquisition, and yes, the developer would pay for the construction of the sewer line.
Okay, and so it would have to go through the easement process with the appraisal and the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
Identified based on flow, or has that got lift stations?
I think it's, it's based on flow. We're trying to get as much as we can to be gravity through there.
Yeah, I don't know if you have the map.
The other consideration was, is I think some of that property is, could be, later on, could be developed and have a greater access to usage.
There's about a mile down through there that could be developed.
Mr. Strange just indicated there's actually two lift stations designed as a part of this.
Yeah, it's not all gravity. It's, there is some, but I think the consideration was is to get as much as we can to the gravity flow.
Yeah, I guess what we're discussing is our urban growth boundary pretty much goes out there to Mona Road, and there's about, seven or eight large tracts of land in that one-mile section that's not going to have access to the sewer, that would most likely develop at some point. So I guess the developer could bring it up the back of the property, but that's the conversation, I think, is just...
Yeah, I think that was the consideration, is that we could feed off the backside as it develops. Yeah. Did you hear that? The crossing, the crossing at 840, the crossing at 840, there is a crossing that's been, been put in a sleeve, comes out at the end of that ramp, and that just makes it...
Yeah. Yeah, if you tried to go back to Jefferson Pike, it'd be kind of a pain, so I see what you're getting at. I'm just trying to figure out, I guess, this, this map doesn't really show the urban growth boundary. We're just trying to imagine how much is not kind of being covered, or how much is, right?
The urban boundary goes close to Pass Chapel Road, right?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it's on the top side when you get up at Bill France, yeah. And if you remember some of the development opportunities I showed you up there, really it encompasses that Rutherford County side up to the Wilson County line, and that development, once we get to the, to the creek or the river crossing up there, that's where all the development will, will backfeed that way. The other opportunity will be, once the sewer's on that side, is those properties develop, depending on if it develops individually as one, one track, or if they, you know, we see a lot of people going out and putting tracks together and making a development, then you can feed off that backside into it.
Other questions?
What's the consolidated water flow to account here?
There's work has to be done on the water.
There's work that definitely has to be done, yeah.
They're negotiating, I think, with them separately, so...
So when you say work, does that mean like months or years' worth of needing to plan for it?
It's a fraction of how much money they want to spend to get it done.
Okay. That's fair.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, they're, they're, they're working on, there's, there's a couple of things they've looked at, and I don't want to speak for the Water Department and CUD, but there's been some conversation about even to the extent of what the cost would be to put a tower where they could take a lower flow, but pump to the tower and then have the flow down, so there's a couple of different ways they're looking at it, so...
Also, I know it's not in this motion, in this matter, but gas, would gas also be included or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Our plan would be, the developers looking at the cost of the sewer, we would probably run natural gas up there as part of our side of this because of the ability to profit off the gas sales.
Yeah.
And there would be very much a reason for us to run gas up there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Do we approve?
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item...
I can have another question.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just kidding.
Will this gravity feed?
Some of it will, not all of it. I think there's two pump stations that have to be put in, but there are sections that will gravity.
Okay.
If you, if you look at that terrain up there, I mean, it, it goes down into the bottom, down where the river crossing is, and then back up the hill.
Well, I was just looking at the path of Fall Creek, and it's...
It's not following the path of Fall Creek?
No.
That's all, sorry. Pardon me for interrupting you, Mayor.
No, you're good. Item B is package liquor board report. There are no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is a public hearing in consideration of a resolution declaring the intent of the town council to consider the adoption of a commercial property assessed clean energy and resiliency program.
This is one we brought to you at the workshop. We've got a client. This is a program that's been put in by the state to allow for some special financing for green energy-type product in some projects. It's really only available in large commercial and industrial. We do have a project out on Sammerly Parkway that has asked for us to allow them to use this. It has to come through the town, and what happens is basically we will approve the project based on what they're requesting to put in. It could be everything from the heating and air to low, slow showerheads to glass, those kind of things. Once we approve it, then it goes to a third party to institute the financing program. Basically, the town will be able to collect a fee for our process through the town, and then basically it goes to that third party, and then they do the financing and the collection. We have no recourse back if something were to happen, if they defaulted on their loan or anything. It's really just a mechanism that the state put in place that it has to come through the local community to be approved.
Counsel, questions for Brian on this. Okay, seeing none, it is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you'll come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dan Eppright, 114 Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee. Just a quick question, triggering off of maybe one word that Mr. Hercules used, and that was benefiting large businesses. Are there, are there benefits or liabilities for small businesses as opposed to large businesses under this act? And that would be the only question.
Great, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing, and Brian, any, do you know the answer to that question?
Yeah, the program was put in place by the state. We didn't have any involvement in building the program, and I think it was used really as a, a way to incentivize companies to, when they come in here and build a new building, to look for green processes. Probably the largest bang for the buck was on the larger businesses, larger industry. I can't really speak to why the state built the program the way they did, but it did have to come through as a resolution for us to be able to participate in it. I know Rex Gaither, our finance and director and assistant town manager, and Jeff and I did a lot of time researching. Several communities have put this in place. I think, I know White House and I think, was it Columbia?
Nashville.
Nashville, and this was the first request we had to use that type of financing. So we did the research on it, and, you know, we don't see any roadblocks for us to be able to participate in it. And it, it just helps the customer receive a little better interest rate on that portion of the project. So basically, what they'll do is, let's just say it was a hotel for some reason, all the things that could be included in the green energy financing will be put on that, and then they'll go out and get standard financing for the balance of the project. So basically, it'll be like splitting the mortgage on the project.
Okay. Other questions for Brian? Seeing none, I'll go to counsel for a motion.
I will move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item D, which is consideration of an ordinance to amend Title V, Chapter Nine of the Smyrna Municipal Code relative to the CPACER Act.
It's the same thing we just talked about. This is just the change in the ordinance to accommodate this.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item E, which is consideration of an ordinance approving final budget amendments for the fiscal year 2023. Hi, Rex.
Hello, Mayor, Council. These are the last of the fiscal year 2023 budget amendments. There were some operating expenses for the cemetery and utility services for the event center that were over budget. The balance of the amendments were for capital projects such as computers, a wash station at the garage, the Lowry Street project, and street paving. We would ask that you would approve these budget amendments.
Questions for Rex on this one? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item F, which is consideration of a proposed amendment to Article Nine to the Town Charter relative to the Town Court. Jeff, are you going to take this one?
Yes, Mayor, Council. As to the ordinance, as you, as you know, the council discussed at the workshop and placed, there were several options before you in the event that the town council chooses to put forward an amendment in the charter amendment process, which includes this body, a referendum vote also to the Tennessee Legislature, as well as back, back to you for another two-thirds vote. But if you do choose so, this option, which at the time was B, now is just the proposed charter amendment in your packet. This amendment would seek to remove the concurrent general sessions jurisdiction of the Town Court, and it would amend Article Nine of the Town Charter. Obviously, as you can see, you have it there before you. In 902, there is where the concurrent jurisdiction would be removed. The, we have two elected positions down there at the current time. You have an elected court clerk, and you have an elected town judge. Those positions would fulfill their terms, their current elected terms. When the, the reason those, those positions are elected are because we do hear criminal cases at the time, because we have concurrent jurisdiction, which makes us an inferior court versus just what they call a corporation court, what the municipalities generally are when they hear only violation of the municipal code, code infractions, those types of things, speeding tickets, all those types of things. However, at the end of the term of the court clerk, this position would then become a town employee position that the town manager would designate for the town clerk's duties. And then at the end of the town judge's term, that she was elected for, that position would then become appointed by the town council and serve at the will of the town council. As I said, this is the first reading. After this, there would be, in the paper for three weeks, three continuous weeks, there would be advertisement of what this charter change is. We would have a public hearing, just like we do with any other ordinance. This is an ordinance that we're passing to accomplish this. And then if it passes with a two-thirds vote again by the town council, it would be set then for referendum with the, the town voters. Would be in March, if you so choose, would be the earliest other election going on at the time. So we would have to correspond with, the Election Commission, provide them the information that they, they require. And then if it received a favorable vote at that time, then the General Assembly would need to take it up because it is a private act change for our charter amendment. If it passes the General Assembly, then it would return to the town for another two-thirds ratification vote. And if you look on here, you'll see on the ordinance at the bottom there, the effective date would be July 1st of 2024, if all of those milestones occur with, with passage.
We have had two meetings prior to our workshop and tonight's meeting. We've hashed through quite a bit of information, but is there any, are there any questions that anyone has at this point?
Mayor, I did want to say that the standard that you must use consists of, is an inferior court, is that the purpose of this change is for judicial economy and efficiency. I think we discussed it at the workshop, but I did want to bring that up at regular scheduled council meeting.
Okay. Questions?
I have some questions. So, since the meetings were held, I know that at different times, different parties who are involved in this had been contacted, but has there been a meeting with all the parties involved, like everyone sitting at the table? The DA's office, PD's office, the county administration, the circuit clerk, have, has everybody been brought to the table to understand what this is going to entail?
Do you want to talk?
We have had meetings with all those folks, not one meeting with everybody at the same table, but we've had individual meetings with all the associated parties.
We are, we still have to do the public, the magistrates and the public defender, but those two, we're...
We've contacted them.
We've contacted them to get on their schedule.
Okay. And the clerk's office, the circuit clerk, y'all met with her as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And the city, and the county attorney.
Okay. All right. And then as far as the caseload, so my understanding, because I did ask about, like, what we're looking at, if this transfers, and Rutherford County, what I was told has like 10,500 cases estimated, and then town of Smyrna actually has like 5,927 cases from this past year?
That's not the figure that we were given by the...
We, the, I asked for the caseload, and what I was given was an email back saying that we had a caseload for the year of 5,927.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yes. What we also looked at was the caseload based on what the court was requiring. What we also looked at was the caseload based on what the court was requiring. The judge right now sets the caseload on her docket, it's at 55 cases. And we, we took that to the circuit court clerk and talked about it. They did not feel like it was a, a problem for them to absorb that caseload.
Okay. Because it, it is an increase of like 56% of what they currently do. So that, that to me says that we're giving them a lot of, of additional caseload.
That's not the number they're giving us, that is their caseload.
Okay, what number did they give you?
22,000.
Okay. So they're doing 22,000. That would be general sessions plus circuit?
They just said that was the general sessions. The three general sessions judges said they do 22,000 cases, and that's what the judges told us.
The other concerns that I had, or the other question is, I know we are doing, we, in the, in the workshop, we talked about the fact that there had been an, I don't know if we're going to call it an assessment, but of looking at what the budget would require to do this back in 2018. And we had that discussion, and I know, Steve, you mentioned that you weren't concerned with what the numbers were, or let me rephrase that. So I brought up the fact that we included the police's budget as a part of this, and there was a, a large number saying what we would have to transfer, what we would have to spend in order to transfer this to, back to general sessions, Rutherford County. And you indicated that you were okay, based on the fact that the chief had said that conversations he's had with other police departments, they don't have any issues with it. And so you, you said that the budget, it would be reflected in the budget if those numbers were not the same. If it ended up being that there was an actual, an actual increase on the budget, it would show up in the next year, and then he would have to account for that, because now we're saying there's going to be a watch. Do you remember having that conversation?
Yeah, I do. I don't know what the question is, but...
I haven't asked the question yet, I'm trying to...
But let me clarify a couple of things.
Okay.
So what, what I said was that if he is wrong on his estimates, then he would be responsible for those, and he would have to come to us and ask for the additional budget. That also is assuming that if the court went away, we're talking about 900,000, 700,000, whatever number you want to use, a large number of money that would not be spent. So he would have to be off by a million dollars to even break even at that point. That's what my point was, is that even if he's off by a fraction or even 10%, the hit is minor compared to the cost to leaving.
Okay.
So that's where I, that's what I said, but go ahead.
Okay. And so I, what I want to get understanding on is that at this point, we don't have a number, but we have the ability to have a number. We do have the ability to get a number if we took the time to do an assessment and say, okay, it is going to appear that there's, there's not going to be a budget deficit or a budget increase needed, because we took the time to do an actual assessment now, like we did back then, because we don't really have a number at this point.
I, I guess one of the things I want to point out is, the assessment you're speaking of was actually our current, the chief at that time, sat down and just said, here's what I think I'll have to have, and he put a number to, you know, 12 additional patrol officers, you know, six cars, those kind of things. There was not a audit assessment of that. The difference, the difference today is, I think, you know, with our new chief, he's looking at it through a different pair of glasses, because he comes from an area where they moved everything to the county, like we're talking about doing here. And the other thing I think that, that has to be taken into consideration, we, we've sat down with the sheriff, we've sat down with the judges, and we talked about the caseload, we talked about how much time the police officer is going to have to spend in court, those kind of things. A couple of things have changed, and, and very quickly, the, the, the general sessions county judges said that one of the things that happened is, they see very little time with the police officers in court in comparison to what used to happen, I think, and that's, that's where, I think Chief Arnold, I think he was looking at it the way it was. Today, we can use a court liaison, and a court liaison can go down and be that spokesperson. And then they literally are allowing them to get an officer on the phone, and the DA's will make some accommodations over the telephone if needed. If not, what they do is they set, they'll, they'll tell LeVern, they'll tell Murphysboro, what day is better for you to have officers in court? And they, they work around that on a monthly basis to, to set aside a day if you need to, if the docket required it, two days instead of having a case every day and somebody having to go down. So there's a lot more efficiency in the way they're doing it. We don't see, and, and even as, as early as today, I asked Chief Irvin to make sure, I said, do your research. So he talked to LeVern, he talked to Murphysboro, and talked about, you know, the time that it, it takes to make an arrest and get it through their system as far as booking, and then also in their courts. And everything that we've researched at this point goes back to the faction that it's, it's not near what, what Chief Arnold showed from the previous assessment. And I, I'm not saying either one's right or wrong, it's just, that's all we can do to figure out what's going to happen, and what does it look like? And truly, I think, you know, when, when Chief Arnold and I talked about it in 2018, 2019, he said, you know, we're going to have four or five people a day sitting all day in court. Well, we're not seeing that as the norm anymore.
Okay.
So those are the, the numbers we have. I will tell you, you know, we, we talked about this today a little bit, Jerry and I talked about this, you know, when we make an arrest in Smyrna today, we bring them from, from the arrest point into the, to Smyrna facility, which is not considered a jail. We have a two-hour window to move them and process them through. We don't have the facilities that they have at Rutherford County. We talked about that. We talked about, you know, the training that our people get versus what, what happens at the jail and the training they get from the standpoint of liabilities. And the touch points, you know, we're, we're seeing, even from the standpoint of an arrest made on the streets of Smyrna today, by the time we get them to the, down to the police department, get them in the cell, move them over, get them booked, get them back in the cell, waiting and see if they're going to be able to make bail. If they don't make bail, then we have to, again, we have to put them in a car, we have to take them to Rutherford County and take them through the process. It's five to six touch points where if we're moving them directly, because the, the jurisdiction would be in the county, we arrest them on the street, we put them in the car, we take them to Rutherford County, the touch points reduces from five or six touch points for the Smyrna Police Department down to one or two touch points from that standpoint for liability. Now, the question's been, are we not just moving liability from, from us to somebody else? The simple answer is probably yes, and that's not the intent, but I think the difference is, is they're better prepared for that process, they train for that process, they have the accommodations for that process at Rutherford County statutorily, that is, they're, they have to be ready for that. That's what they do, they actually operate at jail, we don't. So I think there's some, again, efficiencies that are accommodated through that. I think it helps us with, with some of the possibility of liability, not only for the prisoner, but also for our officers. But all that plays into, and it's part of the reasoning that, you know, as we talk to Murphysboro, we talk to LeVern, we talk to Eagleville, part of the reason they're doing what they do, and that is move everything in the general sessions back down to Rutherford County. So I, I don't know if I've answered your question.
So there's no need really to try to quantify what that cost would look like, because the cost is minimal, is that, that's kind of what I hear you're saying.
Well, I think one of the things I've tried to look at is, you know, what, how much time is involved, because that's, that's a big part of this, is how much time is involved? You know, the chief and I have had many conversations over the last month about this. I will tell you, he wasn't here about 30 days, and he came to my office and wanted to talk about this. He, he was not happy with, with some of the things we were doing from the standpoint of liability and concern for the safety of our officers. And we began to talk about that. It's just, you know, ironic that in that same timeframe, the mayor and I had had conversations about taking a look at the, the courts as an overall from the expense side. You know, again, in 2018, 2019, when we looked at this, we, we found several, what I felt like was inefficiencies that we could deal with, and, you know, we really pushed hard to make some changes that would help make the court operate better, and help us, from the community standpoint, provide that service here without it being a huge expense on the, on the ratepayers, the taxpayers. And, you know, we changed probations and brought it in. And even though probations, if you look at the numbers, is not standing on its own, it's making more money than it did when it was outsourced. You know, the other thing we did, we looked at, I know there was some inefficiencies in the software, and we, we had a major expense to, to change the software. We talked about, and I think at the time, Clerk Stevens, we hired a third-party collection agency, trying to do all those things we could. At the end of the day, as we come forward, we're not seeing the benefits of some of those changes to offset the continued loss. So I think that's part of why we're doing this exercise today. You know, I, I don't, I don't know that I have all the answers to say there's a, there's a magic wand out there that would put a dollar figure on everything. I will tell you, one of the things that I took very serious as we went through this process, and I put these numbers together for y'all, they came directly out of the general ledger. That's the most purest place to get real numbers. I mean, if we take this report or that report, and, you know, it, it, sometimes it's, it's a faction of what day was that report run on? These are general ledger numbers that were audited in '22 and closed. 23 numbers are in the books and being audited currently. That's the most pure form of getting the numbers that, that I could find. And that's what I wanted to make sure, we were looking at good numbers. I did not want to bring something up here to you and present it to you that I couldn't stand by. But the numbers we have are, are general ledger.
Sure, that was a question I was going to ask, Raquel. You said that we don't have numbers, but I think we do. The, the report, I'm looking at the email that we all got on October, I mean, on August 24th, and Brian and the chief and everybody put together numbers with projected, what we thought the projected cost would be without general sessions.
Yes.
And they ran it both ways, with paying the judge and the clerk, the current judge and clerk throughout their terms or not, and...
It just didn't have any of, any numbers related to the police department. It had the liaison.
No, it did.
But it doesn't have, like, if there were overtime, or if officers have to be off the road.
If you look, if you look at that, the set of numbers, there are the, the warrants officers that are 40 hours a week, serving warrants, that only would happen when we have general sessions. Those, those officers are also used as security inside the courtroom, so they, they are 100%. Their time is allocated to the, to the courts. It's in the police budget, but it's, it's officers that work strictly in the court side, that, you know, would change if we didn't, we moved the court back to Rutherford County. The other thing we had was on the transportation, and that was the overtime, because most of the time, what we have to do is get an officer to come in on his day off, and we pay him overtime to do the transport, and that was about 50, I don't have, I don't have it here if I need to.
So I saw the indirect costs, yeah.
Yeah, $50,000, yeah, $55,000. You know, the problem that, I think the scope of the problem with this is, is this is not about anybody doing anything wrong. We've got a good judge, we've got a good clerk. The problem is, is it's an inherent problem when you look at the way our system works, even with all the efficiencies we've tried to put into it, you still have that 40% that goes to the county that, that won't change. You've got the money that we have to pay to the TBI, the MAD organization, all those, I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was 52 or 57 liabilities right off the top on the general session side, that it, it just, it buries us before we get started. And, you know, then you turn around and go, you know, the DA's and the general, the, the prosecutors, you know, if they work in Rutherford County, they get paid through the state. But to get them to come to, to our court, we have to pay extra.
Additional.
And that's an additional cost to us that, again, becomes a burden on the cost factor. The transportation, I know there's been several conversations about, you know, well, the sheriff transports to Rutherford County, why doesn't he transport here? Listen, we sat down with the sheriff, and he told us that by mandate, he, and there's no, he hadn't provided anything in writing, we didn't ask for it. I mean, at some point, you just have to take the man at his word. I'm not going to, you know, agitate him, because he'll be waiting on me to put me in jail, you know, but at the end of the day, he says, I'm mandated to transport to the county courthouse, and that's all I do. If you guys choose to have your court, then it's your responsibility to transport your prisoners. And so again, that's, that's an additional 50 and 60,000 that this other, you know, court system doesn't have. It goes back to, you know, I appreciate what Jeff said, as far as the reasoning behind this, goes to the effectiveness and the efficiency of the court. And we have a huge weight on our shoulders trying to operate this court and make it work from the standpoint of what the expense is to the taxpayer, that I'm not sure we can overcome.
So then, this expense, some of it's going to continue, though, because basically what, what this proposal, what, what has been agreed to, to be presented for the proposal is that the responsibilities for the general session is being bifurcated from the salaries and term. So we're going to continue to pay them throughout their term until their term ends.
Yes. Not only will we pay them their, their salary, we also can provide their benefits, and we also provide their retirement through the 401 and the 457. But if you look at, and I, I think I showed these numbers, based on what generals, what municipal court is, is actually showing a positive cash flow, we can afford to pay that through their terms and still be a positive cash flow. And then as those term limits fall off, it would increase us, I think we were at about $700,000 of positive cash flow through municipal court. And we're, we're seeing this $900,000 deficit on, on the other side. But even with the salaries for the two elected officials left in there, we were able to, to maintain a positive cash flow.
So that would be...
And that would be a declining expense and an increasing revenue stream.
Once their term ends.
Once their term ends, yes.
Okay. But then the other issue with regards to, to doing that is, we're basically taking away some of the, we're taking away the responsibilities of general sessions court, which is part of what they were elected to do. And so with the information that had been provided to us from Jeff related to the, the MTA's opinion, the case, there is no case law to say what we are attempting to do is going to be allowed. We don't know that, because there's no case law that says this can be done. So I feel like it's premature to do this for next year, and then they still, with the clerk's office, she still has two more years, and then the judge would still have six more years, but then they're not being, they're not, they won't have the same responsibility any longer, but they're going to be paid for the same amount, they're going to be paid the same amount, but with less responsibility, because we're basically voting for that part of it to go away. They're going to, we're going to lose the general sessions jurisdiction, which means they will no longer be responsible for those, those actions any longer. So I feel like it's premature to do this now.
So when would you think, when do you think the right time to do it?
Would be at the end of their terms, because then they...
So do it once at the end of the clerk's term, and then do it once at the end of the judge's term, so two separate?
Yes, if that's in order to be able to allow them to have their, to fulfill the responsibility for which they were elected.
But were they not elected, were they not elected as the town judge?
But, but not just as the town judge, because they have, she, because we have general sessions jurisdiction here in our town. And basically, but what we're about to do is take that away.
I just recall on the election forum that it said, town judge, municipal, and sessions.
It doesn't make the distinction, it doesn't take it off, that's what I'm saying. But that's what she was elected to do, because that's part of the whole responsibility.
She was elected, she was elected, and, or both were elected to be the town judge and the town clerk, and they were still serving that capacity.
But not being, but they wouldn't fulfill all their responsibilities?
Jeff, based on what you've done through MTA's and what you've talked to other attorneys, can you give us an answer to, to her question?
Well, I can give you the...
Well, it wasn't really a question, it was, okay.
So I think what you're probably referring to is this Article 11, Section 9 of the Tennessee Constitution that deals with abridging a term or salaries of an incumbent municipal or county official.
And I understand doing that would be unconstitutional if we, and so, but it was in relationship to Article 6, is what the MTA's report talks about, that there's no case law as it relates to those two being...
So, so some of it is in what the definition is going to be of that term. So in Article 11, Section 9, it discusses term and salaries. And so there is no further definition of, does, does that term mean the term of eight years as a municipal judge, or does that... years as a municipal judge or does that term mean including all of their jurisdictions? So it could, no jurisdiction, because it doesn't say jurisdiction cannot be removed.
It isn't.
It doesn't say that in there. And so our office, Helen Fisher, as you're well aware of, has opined as well, is that this is an Article 6 question for the General Assembly and whether they have the plenary power or absolute authority to change the jurisdiction, remove it, create it, abolish it, however you want to put it, of criminal inferior courts. We believe in it, not just based on, we had initially have discussed the Attorney General opinion in 2017, but obviously we would not bring to you something that was just from one Attorney General opinion. We believe there are several cases, Duncan versus Ray, as well as Roach versus, versus Dasset, that speaks to the General Assembly's authority to change jurisdiction of inferior courts. And also to, to give authority to municipal courts or to withdraw, that they have that authority under Article 6, Section 1, and Section 8, I believe. So you're right, I mean, as we discussed, that the question with M-Test at that time involved particularly the terms would be ending completely. Obviously, that's not, that is not what the council has proposed tonight. The council proposed tonight the term and salaries maintained, not, not reducing and filling them out. So could there be a declaratory judgment filed to ask for the definition of term? Of course there is. You know, there's, that's why we have court, you're attorney just like me, so you know that. But obviously, we would not bring something to you that we blatantly believe was unconstitutional.
And I didn't say it was unconstitutional. I didn't say that. I said that I believe this is being done prematurely because we're basically bifurcating those two items, the term and the salary, from the responsibility. That's what I said. So I didn't say it was unconstitutional.
Okay. I misunderstood you. I thought you said you had constitutional issues.
No, I said it wasn't, I didn't think it was incorrect what you were saying under Article 11. That's not what...
Y'all are speaking a lot of lawyer speak, which I may or may not follow some of, but I think what I heard was you're saying that there is language that says that there is, potentially is authorization to reduce their responsibilities, to use the word that Raquel's using, reduce their jurisdiction, which would reduce their responsibilities in effect.
Correct. For, for the criminal side, which makes it an inferior court. Otherwise, a municipal court is a corporation court. What makes us an inferior court is the criminal concurrent jurisdiction.
Okay. Other comments? Okay.
The only comment I'll say is, there's been a lot of things that I've heard over the last few weeks and I think it's important to keep in mind that what we're voting on is the opportunity for the citizens to decide. And really, that's it. If, if this, if the citizens believe that this is a beneficial service and that 700,000, 800,000, 900,000, million, five, whatever the number is, is worth spending to continue this service for the community, then we keep doing that. And if they say, "No, we don't think we should pay taxes to the city to do something the county should be doing," then they vote accordingly and we move forward from there. And that's the way, to me, it's that black and white.
Other comments?
Go ahead, you, you're concerned.
Well, because I, I also understand what you're saying about it being that black and white, but I still believe that there is a possibility of litigation making this decision. That's what I believe.
Oh, I think that's been floated out there for a long time.
Yeah, there's a possibility of litigation on pretty much every decision we make. That's part of what we're elected to decide. We, I mean, twice at the BZA, I've been turned into HUD and I've been sued. So that's a, that's a possibility every time we make a decision.
But there's less risk of doing at the end of someone's term is where I'm going with this. I feel like it's...
I guess that, that's an opinion. I think, I'm trusting Jeff and the folks that have looked at this that says if we don't change, end their term or cut their pay, then we're not violating Section 9 or 11 or whatever it was, right?
No, Section, Article 11.
Whichever, yeah. So I, I think that's, honestly, that was why originally we were talking about it just ends. And then we came back and said, "We, we're not sure, we're not comfortable with that." That's the reason why, because at that point...
Because it would have been unconstitutional if we do it that way.
It seemed like, it seemed like it could have been a concern, a bigger concern. I, I trust that Jeff and the folks that we hired to tell us this is doing their job and telling us the facts.
And to be clear, this, this issue of whether term includes jurisdiction has not been litigated that we're aware of with, within the Tennessee court.
Just as there's no case law to support it, there's none to not support it either.
That's, that's correct, as far as that particular issue.
Right.
Especially in dealing with a municipal court.
Other comments?
We spend a lot of time looking at ways to, to save our citizens money. And this one is such a glaring thing, you know, and we look at continuing the court for the, the next seven years or whatever, and we're looking at $7 million or more than that. And, you know, it's like when we were raising taxes a few years ago, many years ago, thank God, you know, we had citizens said, "Why don't y'all let us make that decision? Have a referendum on it." And it's like, gosh, you know, we would like to give you a referendum on that, but it's not an option, you know, and we were elected to make those decisions. And we reached this one right here and this is, you know, another very, very tough decision. I mean, this is a hard one. But when it gets down to it, as Steve indicated, we have the option of letting the citizens make this decision. So if they, you know, are interested in, in saving this money, then they'll vote for it. If they have, if the court gives them that much value, then they'll, they'll vote to save the court. And, you know, when, when we created the court many years ago, I think that there, there was one aspect of it that appealed to me as a small businessman. And that was the idea that as a small businessman, I didn't have to go to Murfreesboro to prosecute for bad checks. I mean, we all remember bad checks, right? They're pretty well gone these days, thank goodness. But, you know, that's something that just, it doesn't have the same value to the citizens today that it did all those years ago. And...
On that same line, I talked to one of the former council members that voted to do this as well. And she told me that one of the reasons they also did it was because at that time, police officers were spending hours and hours in the courts because of the way the court was operated at that time.
Exactly.
Again, that's also not an issue today based on the being able to do court liaisons and the way that the court system operates now.
H.G., to your point, my father-in-law used to talk about that as well because he was always having to go to Murfreesboro to, on bad checks.
Absolutely.
And we'd walk in, he wouldn't be there, worse time. I mean, well, he's, he's in Murfreesboro.
I mean, it gets to the point sometimes where I don't have time to go to Murfreesboro. You know, this check is this much, so I'm just going to have to let this go. And, you know, and being able to prosecute in Smyrna may, had particular value.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I think it's already been noted and said. I think we all believe the same thing. We have two excellent people in those positions doing as best job as they can. One ran unelected, the other had my full support as well. And it's unlike...
Unopposed.
Unopposed, I'm sorry. Unopposed, thank you. But both were put there for a, a good reason. I had a question come to me from a citizen this week, well, actually last week, called me up, said, "Why now? What, what's caused this now?" And explaining the loss of revenue to the taxpayer was something they didn't realize the numbers were as large as they were. Began to understand then, and why didn't you all do this five years ago or 10 years ago? And I, you know, I think going forward, we could use the same philosophy. We could use the same mentality. We could say, "Well, let's just hold off until these terms end." But as I look at this number here, and I've heard, Steve, you mentioned it, we've heard all kinds of things out there, right? And so blaming the numbers being maybe inaccurate or false or what have you, and I, and I know, Brian, you alluded to this, right off the ledger, a little hard to argue that, right? But as I'm looking at this, 2021, $916,000, 2020, I'm sorry, 2022, and then 2023, $991,000, that's our judicial, general sessions and probation cash flow. Negative. Negative. Now, we're giving 40% of our revenue back to the county. It was a bad deal when it was made. We're already underwater there. Almost half of what we take in, we have to send it back to Rutherford County. So for them to say, "We can take the caseload," but by golly, you should be able to because we've been paying you 40% of our revenue anyway, right? I think from the standpoint, Brian, I appreciate the explanation about the caseloads and things like that, that they obviously feel like they can take on. So for me, it's been said, when I look at that number and I think about our taxpaying citizens, if they truly knew, if this, if this number's accurate, we believe it's, it's right in there, right? Knowing that almost a million dollars a year is being lost on a duplicated service that they're already paying county taxes to be done in Rutherford County. In essence, you're also paying a city tax partially to have a service done here for convenience. It's a duplicated service. That is a lot of money that our taxpayers need to vote on. And that's all we're saying. We're not saying that this needs to be shut down. We're not saying that it needs to be left alone. All we're saying is, that's a lot of our citizens' money and they should have a right to decide if it's something they want to do or not do. And whatever that answer is, we move forward. We just, we deal with that, we move forward. I don't think anybody that I gather is intentionally trying to say, "We are shutting this court." Now, that is not what anybody up here in this council is saying. All we're saying is, let's turn it over to our public and let them make a decision if that almost million dollars can be used in a better way inside the city instead of paying for a duplicated service twice through your county taxes and also through your city taxes.
Marsha, you said that if you were asked, "Why now? Five to 10 years ago, why didn't we do this before?"
Right.
To me, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Exactly.
Is we have this referendum and the citizens say they want to keep the court just as it is, they feel that it's a benefit and they are comfortable with whatever the spend is currently, as long as we manage it and try to keep it as minimal as possible. Now, we can answer that question and future councils can answer that question five, 10 years from now.
Why not now?
Why didn't you do it?
Right.
We can say, "We, we discussed it, we looked at it and we proposed it to the citizens and the citizens decided."
And I like the idea of making sure these people that were elected, and again, they, to me, they're, they're wonderful people, they do a good job. I like the idea of at least paying them for their elected term. I like that idea. I like that option. That's the least, very least we can do as a council to show that, yes, we still do acknowledge and appreciate who you are and the job you did. It's, it saves us still about two-thirds of this money. And that's a lot of money. So I, I have many friends that are involved in this and that's one thing I've always said, I, I hate to see friendships strained or lost over some of this, but when I look at this and I think about our citizens, that's what we are up here compelled to do. We're up here, H.G. said, save our citizens as much money as we can, spend it wisely. It's duplicated, it's not, to me, it's not wisely spent anymore. And that citizen that called me, that Steve just mentioned, understood it after I explained it. I see why now, some, at some point, you have to make that decision. It's hard to make. It's a hard decision to make. Just to H.G.'s point, it's tough. The other thing for me, and I'm sorry if I'm getting a little lengthy here, is listening to Chief Irwin talk about safety for his officers and how the courts have changed and it can accommodate this with court liaisons and so forth, the lack of touches now that have to take place should this happen, from six to two, sure does remove a lot of liability on our peace officers, a lot of liability. Safety as well. Bad things can happen in transport. It can happen. So I said that last month at the end of the workshop and I just wanted to have an opportunity to kind of share my feelings about everybody involved in this. They mean a lot to me. They're friends of mine. But I have to take my glasses and look at these numbers and go, "That's a big number" that our taxpayers are having to pick up." So that's all I have.
Anybody else?
For me, it comes down to what we've talked about from the beginning is judicial economy and efficiency. And do we, as a council, feel that this court is providing judicial economy and efficiency? And so I think as we take the vote today, I think we each have to vote based on what we feel is the right thing to do. And so with that, I will open the floor up for a motion.
So moved.
Jeff, do you need it specified?
I think you stated it, but I think it'd be good to have that on the record, the purposes of doing such a huge motion.
Let's get some wording here then.
Jeff, can you help with that?
I'm sorry, I thought H.G. was looking at us. Well, it's just as we talk, I think, your reasoning, you've already stated it and it's in the minutes. However, for the General Assembly to do this, it's our opinion, needs to be based upon judicial economy and efficiency. So I would encourage you, if that is your reasoning, to put, place that in your, any motions that you, if that's your belief.
I move that based upon the reasoning of judicial efficiency and economy that we move on first reading to have the amendment to Article 9 of the Town of Smyrna Charter to be sent to the citizens for a referendum. Did I hit enough high points there, sir?
That is fine. It's an ordinance, but you're fine.
Oh, yeah, it is, isn't it?
But you did state what's going to happen, so I think that's fine.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes on first reading, six to one. We'll move on to item nine under other, A, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Global Synthetic Ice for the purchase of an ice rink. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, Council. The town opened proposals for a synthetic ice rink on August 22nd, received proposals from Quick Rink, Global Synthetic and Glice. Proposal included ice rink panels, dashboards, skates, skate racks and associated equipment. I wanted to add, this is not real ice, it's synthetic ice. Again, I know that's a big deal in Tennessee. So staff also recommended purchasing the upgraded mobile rack, ice underlayment panels, benches and that type of thing, and the fencing for the skate changing areas. We, we did a lot of research and, and referenced, called references and then scored them. And based on the proposals, we feel that Global... benches, and that type of thing, and the fencing for the skate changing areas. We did a lot of research and referenced, called references, and then scored them. And based on the proposals, we feel that Global Synthetic Ice had the best proposal. So you're seeing, and I included some of the information there in your packet as well.
Questions for Mike on this?
Mike, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Assuming this is approved, what's the timing? Is it, could it be in place for this winter?
Yes, sir. That's why it's under Other tonight, just because we started looking at this a while back, and O'Brien, we'd met about this a while back. But, yeah, and that was considered while grading them, you know, the panels and things like that can be delivered pretty quick, but some of the other things take a little bit longer, but it could be in place. And most of them that we found, when you put them up, it's two or three days, depending on how many people we have and the type site that you have. We were looking at putting this at the event center, just because we have resources down there, parking, lighting, electricity, that type of thing. And then it's close to the office and, you know, all the things we might need.
You can skate it on your lunch break.
I'm sorry?
You could skate on your lunch break.
Yes, we got a lot of options.
So the second question is, since it's synthetic ice, there's no Zamboni, I'm assuming?
No, there is a vacuum cleaner.
Okay.
We could add a seat if you'd like.
Yeah.
We have.
I just wanted to see if I could get a ride on the Zamboni.
We can, we got enough equipment to put something out there.
Sounds like Steve wants to run the vacuum.
You can ride the vacuum. I guess that's what I get, right?
It sounds like we've got to.
We put a seat on the vacuum.
That's right.
It's interesting, synthetic ice, it's almost like a self-healing. It's the same skates that you would use on ice, and it makes the same cuts, but the material is self-healing, and then all you do is vacuum it. And I think there was a polisher or something that you could come back in.
Yes, sir. Everyone that we spoke to said that the key to these is keeping them clean.
So how long?
So we made a dictatory.
How long would we have it for?
You've got warranties.
He said we're buying.
I'm sorry.
She was asking how long we have it.
This isn't a rental?
This is not real. We are actually purchasing this.
Oh, okay.
And it has a life expectancy of 15 to 18 years.
That was going to be my question.
So it's going to be in the parking lot? Or you're going to build a?
Yeah, we've got two locations. We're looking at, yeah, we're looking at a couple of different locations, but I think once we get the material there, most people put them on a hard surface. But if you put it on grass, or you've got another place, you can build a frame for it. So we kind of want to see what where the panels are and decide which one's the best. And you've got to think about.
It's lighting? Yes.
And we would, this would be a seasonal function for us. This is not something we leave up all the time.
Right.
We're basically talking about, hopefully, we would have it in place, if it's approved tonight, by mid-November, and hopefully be open through the Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays, and maybe somewhere end of January, we would then take it down, and it would be a seasonal function.
Is that what derives the life expectancy, just seasonal use?
No, no, it's, they're saying that it's accommodating that it should last 15 to 18 years if it's taken care of.
I mean, for example, if it's used all year long, it would last that long?
They're saying that it should last 15 to 18 years.
So technically, it should last longer.
So it could actually last us longer.
And you, once you use one side, you can flip the panels over and use the other side. That's kind of the benefit. The other benefit was, you know, I know, we as a group looked at the rentals back a couple of years ago, and you've got a cost for the rental and equipment, all that type of thing, but you also have major league costs with the electricity and coolers and all the things that go along with that. So that kind of goes away, which helps maintenance-wise, and also cost-wise.
So how do we go from?
Okay, I see where we're looking to go with global ice, and it started out being $91,000, now it's $105,000. What did we add?
We added some benches, we added some storage units for the ice. Everything that we've talked about will be included in that price. They have some storage for the panels and stuff versus us building our own. I thought it was worth getting what they have, and then we could condense that and use it in the storage area.
Okay.
And that was included in their RFP. So when I talk to those people, the mobile skate, just things to help the staff out, but also, they felt like it's important to have a good changing area. What happens if you don't have a good changing area to encompass when the fencing, which was part of that, people are going to walk out in the grass, walk on the concrete, and do all those type things with skates, and that's going to slow you down, because you're going to have to repair them, or you're going to have to sharpen them more often.
And I think a sharpener is, there is a skate sharpener that's part of this. Not only the skates themselves, I think it was 120 pair of skates.
This one was 100. You can add as you see fit. Laverne, Laverne did this a couple of years ago, they have one, and they don't use it that long, but they have one down there, too. So it's kind of becoming more popular in our world, you know?
So we'll be able to, will you be able to use same staff that you have now to be able to run this, or you're going to hire new people?
We would hire seasonal. Yeah, we would need to.
That's what we thought about, is even some of the folks that we use for the pool, that we can bring them back as seasonals for this period.
Okay.
Yeah, we would need to hire people to handle that. And we would treat it kind of like we do the pool, hours, and we'll have to work out the hours and things, but we want to start here.
Okay.
Can people that own their own skates bring their skates and skate on this? I mean, just.
They would have to be approved. We prefer them to use what's given to us, but they say that there's some hockey skates that a lot of people do have that do work on this. I'll just have to, we'll just have to see. What I don't want to do is mess up the warranty or mess up panels, so, you know, we would just have to see, see what works the best.
Any idea how quickly you'd go through the conditioner that he talks about on here?
I don't, I don't. I think it's going to bend on the location. H.G., if you put it around a lot of trees, where you, that's some of the things we're looking at. We've got a volleyball, sand volleyball court out there, you know, wind blows one way, you've got to think about those, you've got to think about the trees, you've got to think about lighting, parking, all those things, and it's not summertime. You've got to think about, you know, your people and where they're coming. So we've discussed those things, but I know that keeping that clean, if you go through it, it's going to be worth it to keep it clean, because everybody has said, what's under it and the cleanliness is the success or the failure. But we had zero people say it's a bad idea. So if that tells you anything.
Other questions or comments?
One of the things that was appealing about this to me is, one of the things that we talk about so often is the quality of life of our citizens. And I think this is another one of those opportunities that we can provide citizens for a quality of life experience with maybe generations of families coming out, especially during that holiday season, to enjoy it. So.
Seems like it coupled well with our Christmas on Front Street, this, you know, the carriage rides that we've been doing the last few years.
The Christmas lighting.
Yeah, all of that.
Yeah. So I just think, again, it's another quality of life opportunity that we have to provide citizens.
If this were to move forward, what's the timeline on it, Mike?
Well, as far as ordering and getting it in, I would say, I mean, our goal would be to get it ready, get everything in for this season. So that's what Brian was saying, November, whether it's Thanksgiving or a little bit after that. But I, it didn't seem to be any issues with the equipment and setup holding us back. But we didn't want to wait.
You may have answered that already.
Yeah.
It's okay.
I didn't, I don't think I.
Yeah, that was one of the things we talked to them about, is if we were able to make a decision, could we get it, you know, get it here for this season? And it, we would, we would hope that it would be here by Thanksgiving, but it may be a little after. But, you know, our consideration would be to have it through that seasonal period through the end of January, available for the citizens to use.
Mike, for the senior citizens, did those skates come with training wheels?
Did you not see that little thing? Did you not see that?
Yeah.
You should be used to it. You know how to use them, so that's what I did.
Yeah, the Skate Aid, they have a good name, Skate Aids, that's a good name for them. If you've been to the fountains in Opera Land and all these other places, they have those as well. So I was asked about capacity, really, you know, they told us 40, 50, but this is a, you know, 3,500 square foot, pretty good sized rink, you know? Some of the people we talked to expanded theirs based on the use, the amount of people.
Other questions for Mike? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to Item B, which is announcement of approval of change order number two relative to Cedarstone Park restroom.
Yes, ma'am. Normally, we would bring this to the town council for their approval before we move forward, but we got into a situation out on the sewer line when we were, the contractor was going in the direction of the manhole near the creek. Where they were going to have to bore was where a lifting lug would be on the manhole. If you moved it, you're going to be having to relocate the interior ladder of the manhole, also break the seal and all that. We didn't feel comfortable messing with that manhole and changing that right next to the creek. Utilities had a recommendation to come from a 90-degree angle, so that's what's before you tonight, is to, basically, we're announcing the change order, they've already started on the work, but it is a lot of rock, y'all can imagine that out there, and they'll be coming in a different direction. But it's additional linear feet, some additional material and labor, and we did ask them for not to exceed price, just that way if they didn't use the proper equipment, or large enough equipment to do the job, the town wasn't out that extra money or extra time. So we did, we asked them to reduce another area. One of the staff members, I felt like it was overkill to have a foreman and a project manager on site, they took that out as well.
This is for announcement only, are there any questions for Mike on this? Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement relative to the purchase of various fire apparatus.
I didn't know if Chief wanted to say anything. You're good, okay. As you know, we had a special meeting about a week ago and talked about the fire apparatus. We have received the specs, and they were sent over to Chief, and he and Assistant Chief Phelps met with the folks from Pierce and went through those. I think everything was worked out, and to your, was it your satisfaction, Chief?
We're working on the first aerial.
Sure. So with us making the change from two quints and a pumper and a service unit, I told you we were looking at changing that to one quint, two, 2,000 gallon pumpers and a service vehicle, we were able to reduce the price by about $200,000, so the total purchase price is the 1.7, or 5.7 million and change, and that will get us those four trucks. We did get some updates on the availability of the trucks, along with the options list for each that I wanted to share with you. So they were, they were looking at 36 to 40 months on the service vehicle. It's now at 30 months from the time we order. The quint with the 107-foot ladder and the options that the Chief and his folks have picked out is 28 months. And then the two, here they are, the two 2,000 gallon pumpers, one will be available in 28 months from time of order, and the other one will be available in 30 months. So we've reduced the timeframe of receiving the vehicles pretty immensely, so. But that is based on us getting the purchase orders in and signed pretty quick. So they do have, I told you that they had put the four motors, that same thing that we have current regulations on, and they are holding, even though these vehicles will not be provided to us until 28 to 30 months out, the prices will retain at this point. There will not be a price increase on them.
Brian, we had discussion about this at the meeting, but can you talk for the publics, for them to understand, talk a little bit about payment and how we're going about doing that?
Yes. You know, one of the things I presented to you in the meeting was, how would we pay for these? And as you all know, we are working on the deal at the Summit property. What we'd like to do is move that money, that basically will cover the cost of these fire engines, back into the town, so that we'd be able to be done without a tax increase. And I think it's a pretty good swap to take a piece of property we've owned for many years, turn it into something that's going to be bringing taxes back in, and then use the proceeds from that to put us in position to purchase these other four trucks. That will actually put us, based on the quint that we've received and the one that's ordered right now that's already been purchased, that puts us with six new vehicles in the lineup, and basically puts us in a position where our fire department frontline vehicles will be in good shape for the next 15 to 18 years. The only difference would be that we've got a, we only have one tower in the town. This will give us three aerials with 100-foot stick on them, but our tower, that's a whole different animal. The one we have is currently 17 years old.
Two pairs.
Yeah, about 17 years old. The lifespan on those is 20 to 25 years. We probably will be looking at a tower probably in the next five years, but that'll be something we'll just, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But a tower, right now in the market, is about $2.2 million just for that one truck. So, but basically, what we've done is, we've taken all of our frontline vehicles and put them in a position where they're in great shape, new vehicles, ready to go. Anything you want to add, Chief? I don't.
Counsel, any comments or questions?
Brian, I appreciate the job you have done in getting us to the point that we can purchase six new vehicles and add a new fire station, you and the team, without having to do a tax increase. I mean, I think that says a lot about our town, and I appreciate all that you've done. I hope that the fire department knows the priority we put on their department and what they do, and that we find the job that they do important, as well as others in this, in this town, and so.
Mayor, I appreciate that, but I will tell you, this is, it's been a work by the team, and I want to say Rex and his staff, and Jeff working with us on the legal side, and then the Chief and his staff, I mean, you know, there's been a lot of hours put into some of this stuff to get us where we're at. You know, one of the things that's the hardest thing to imagine is, you know, you go to the parade in December and you see all of our fire trucks go down the road, and they look great. We had one vehicle, it was a 1986 model, and two that were 89 and, yeah, an 84 model, and we had a couple of trucks that are 95 models. And, you know, you see them in the station, or you see them going down the road, and they're pretty and they're shiny, and they look great. But think about how many years of service, and when you really look at those trucks, they don't have a lot of mileage on them in comparison to their age, in comparison to what you think of your vehicle and my vehicle going up and down the road. The problem is, is the electronics and the pumps and all those things that make that fire truck, a fire truck, that technology is 30 years old. And some of those parts, today, if we lost one pump in one of these trucks, there's a good chance we're not going to find a replacement. And we just cannot put ourselves in a position where we can't respond to fires and emergencies because we've got a part missing in a truck. And when we went through the MTA study, looking at where to place our next fire station, that was one of the things they brought us, and really caught my attention personally from the town manager's seat, to say, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we're keeping this, this fleet in an operating order? And, you know, 20 to 25 years is really kind of the lifespan of these vehicles, and we had a lot of trucks out there that were well past that 25 years. And, you know, the Chief, when I sat down, and the first thing he said to me is, I've been trying to tell you this for five years. And I said, well, I don't know, I don't remember that, but we've, we've batted it around. But, you know, I feel really good that we have figured out a way, and we've done a good job of getting the inventory, we've got a good lineup that we'll be able to move into our reserve fleet and put the new fleet on the street to make it work for the Town of Smyrna, and I feel really good that we're going to leave it at the fire stations, and the fire department's going to be in good shape. And I appreciate the Chief and his staff working with us and getting us to this point.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, I.
I do have one other thing.
I was going to say, I don't see other, yes, under Other, but we need.
Item D, under Other, that we need to talk about. As you guys know, we've been working on this ground lease for the senior center on the five acres. I believe that's off of Bannister is the name of that street. It's off the Sam Really, the 15 acres off of Sam Really. It's what?
Banford, I think.
Is it Banford? I thought it was Bannister. But anyway, we've, we've got the survey done, it's part of your packet. Jeff has done a great job of putting the lease together for us, we've run it by the senior center, they've approved it, they've signed off on it, and I needed to bring it back to the council for the last passover for you guys to make a, is it Bannister?
It's Banfield.
Banfield, okay, I'm sorry. But anyway, and now, if you look on that plot, one of the things that, that But anyway, and now, if you'll look on that plat, one of the things that, that we looked at is Imperial Drive comes around, and there is a thoroughfare plan that Kevin and I found that shows that street, Imperial Drive will actually at some point come around, so one of the things we're doing is putting that on the plat. We're not asking the senior center to build that street, they'll just have to take care of getting to the entrance, where they have their entrances. As, as we look at the future development of that other ten acres, we'll look at bringing that road in, and it's about a thousand feet between the end of Banford back to Imperial, but that street will become a through street at some point. Just wanted to point that out for you.
Question for Brian on this. How, remind me how long it is they have to get started?
I believe it was five years, was it four or five years?
Have to go back through it. Keep in mind, they would also have to come back to you once they have plans of what they're going to build. Since they don't have those right now, they would need to bring those back for your approval.
I understand they're working with a local contractor that does build design.
I think we said five years back.
Yeah. I believe it was five years, if, if they've not done anything within five years.
Thirty-six months, three years.
Three years, three years. Then, then it would have to come back to be reassessed, or it would revert back. Bannstead, well, both wrong.
Bannstead.
Bannstead.
Oh, your map is Bannstead? Because on here, on the survey, it says Banfield on the survey.
Okay.
So, you might need to correct that, too.
We'll get it.
Okay, then they have it incorrect on the survey.
We'll, we'll get that corrected.
If it's wrong, we can just change the street.
It may become Imperial Drive before it's...
That's right.
Do we have a motion?
Move to a group.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
So, I do have a question. So, they're ready to move forward, and that's why it's on here tonight? Okay, as an other.
They're saying that with the, the build design person, he needed a copy of the survey and wanted to know that they had control of the property.
Okay.
So, we were trying to accommodate what their wishes were.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Just a comment, you know, we do, one of the things that we talk about a whole lot is quality of life, and we get different awards for, for different aspects of the quality of life that we provide here, and I think the seniors was one of the things which we received in the war for a good place to retire. And we, you know, we put a lot into our ball fields, and I think we do a very good job there, and we get behind our seniors, you know? And I think this is just another example of us helping to provide the quality of life for our seniors. And, you know, I look across this council, and it's like, Deca, they're all just a bunch of seniors. That's all I've got.
Well, and to tag on to that, HG, I think, a lot of times we see the growth in the area here taking place, but a lot of that growth has become fifty-five-plus restricted living for our senior population. So, I think we've made a lot of headway, not only for quality of life, but also for housing for those people that want to stay here and enjoy that. We've actually given them a product to live and own.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mayor, to speak to the point I think HG just made, I, I just want to say, I had the privilege of going over and speaking to the senior center and showed them the property, and I've worked with Fran, the executive director over there, and, and their, their board members, I cannot tell you how appreciative they are that we're doing this. It takes them a long way down the road to make, make this a reality, to take away the need for property and those kind of things, and as any of you have known, it's built a house or built a business. That's a big piece of what it takes to get off the ground, and I, I just want to say, they have been extremely appreciative of what the town has done, and they've, they've shared that many times, so.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Status report, Rex?
July state share tax, we received 770,508. July local sales tax, we received 1,789,943. Both state and local sales taxes are above budget for the year.
That's a little understatement. That 1.7 is one of the biggest numbers we've seen in the last twelve months, except for maybe two other months, so it's, it's a big number for July.
Nice, you're traffic.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, we're already to, what, nine, eight and a half, nine percent above the budget, right?
Nine point four four.
Yeah.
Look at the difference between seventeen, eighteen to today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
HG, it's working, keep saying it, keep on trucking.
That's right. Okay, um, any announcements tonight?
No, ma'am.
Brian D.
Yes, ma'am, I've got a couple of things I wanted to share with the council tonight. On a personal note for Lieutenant Jeff Duke, just want to continue to remember him and his family in prayers. The last couple of weeks, he's lost his stepmother and his mother-in-law, and they've dealt with that in their home, and that's been a tough situation, and we just want to lift them up in our prayers. Also want to share, while I'm talking about the police department, we recently shared some promotions with our two new assistant chiefs, and we're backfilling those positions, and I want, I'm happy to announce, and I think I've shared it with the council already, but just for the community, if they have not seen this, promotion of Captain Bobby Gibson, from, he's from sergeant to captain, and he will be over uniform services. And then James Scott, who's been one of our detectives for many years, was promoted to captain, and he'll be over investigative and administrative services. As we backfilled their spots, we did have some openings for some sergeants, and you can kind of see how this domino works, and I think Chief was busy today interviewing some corporals, because we just brought a couple of corporals up to sergeant level, and one of them is the promotion of Sergeant Rusty Edwards. Many of you will remember, he's one of the ones that works out here in the lobby sometimes with us, been in the warrants department, and then Sergeant, former corporal, now Sergeant Chris Durham. And I want to say congratulations to all four of those folks, and well deserved on these moves for them, so it's good to see promotions happening. Wanted to share a comment from an individual over on 127 Cedar Forest Drive, came in to, to Captain Patterson, well, it came in to Chief Cobson, and he had Patterson send it up to me. The caller was a Mr. Patrick Ashworth. He didn't remember the names of the folks that worked at our fire department that came out and presented services to him and his family, but he was just really very, very accommodating to our folks, working with our medical, that we went out and helped with some medical transportation with him and his family, and he was showing much appreciation for that. Hal Loughlin sent me one that I thought was one of the most interesting emails I've received. It was talking about a gentleman by the name of Randy Hunt that was coming through Smyrna. I think he's tied to the military, and he had spent spending some time over here at the base and taken advantage of the quality of life in Smyrna and spent a little time on the golf course, and I think he lost his watch at some point. And one of the gentlemen that worked for us, he went back to the cart and couldn't find his watch on the cart, but it was, I guess it was on the golf course somewhere, and one of our employees found it. Not only did he let this gentleman know where we had his watch, and Randy, as I said, he was an active-duty military, he had left the Smyrna area. Our employee actually got his address, went down, took his watch and mailed it to him, I think paid for that out of his own pocket, and this guy was very appreciative that somebody would go to that length to help him, and he tried to pay the gentleman back, and he said, no, said, just, that's the way you pay it forward, and challenged him to do the same thing. So, thank you, Hal, for sharing that story. Do have a couple of things I want to put up on the, the screen. Mayor, you mentioned this one just a minute ago, just very excited about last Friday, we actually had the groundbreaking ceremony for what is Fire Station Four, and I know we've had a lot of comments about, wait, you already have a Station Four. Station Four is our administrative office, it will be renamed to the administrative office, and Station Four will be at Jefferson Pike at Hickory Grove, Hickory Grove Road. It's going to be a fourteen thousand square foot, state-of-the-art fire station, we're very excited about it, not only what's going to be in the station and, and the technology that we'll have there, but also the look of the fire station. I think it's something, as you can see, Chief Bill up there, I think he was pretty proud of that picture that day. Have you, have you brought it from home and let everybody else see it at the fire station yet, or are you keeping it at the house?
I actually got a copy from Miss Heather, so I have one to talk for you.
Okay, but very excited about that, and looking forward to us being able to provide those services in that area, as it's a fast-growing area for our community.
Good-looking fire trucks. That is a good-looking fire truck.
That fire truck in the back with the white cap over the cab, that is actually our newest quint, and that's similar to the product that we'll be ordering with your blessing tonight, that's, that's what we'll be getting. And I think everybody's been pretty pleased with the truck, and so, all right. Next, I've got SOAC will be having a family movie night, it's been rescheduled to Saturday, September the sixteenth. It's free at seven PM, movie starts at dark, and I think Lilo and Stitch is the movie. If you haven't seen it, it's one of the greatest. Kids will love it. I think a lot of adults like it, too, they just don't want to admit it, so. Good movie and good time to come out, and like you said, you can see up there Mr. Coles and the classic, what is that, Grady's?
Grady's.
Yeah. My vision's not as good as it used to be, but Grady's will be there with some food trucks and just a good time to get out and enjoy family time, so come join us. We're very close to Depot Days, and one of the things we have at Depot Days is the night before, on Friday night, we have the car show. This is not a cruise-in, this is a car show. We ask folks to be in place by five o'clock, and the, and we'll release the vehicles to leave that area at eight-thirty, but if you've got one of those sharp cars, that I know several of you do, I know there's a pretty good-looking '72 Monte Carlo that goes around town every once in a while, bring it out, show it off, talking about both of them, so. But classic cars, bikes, customs and those kind of things, lineup is at five forty-five, and the first seventy-five cars will be allowed into the show, we're limited on space, but seventy-five vehicles and in place by five forty-five. So, come down and enjoy the car show on the Friday night prior to the Depot Days. That'll be on, I'm sorry, the date's nine, nine twenty-two of this year, so. Something new we're doing, we've had some folks ask us about this, and the mayor, I think, received an email from somebody asking why the town does not sponsor a shred day, so.
We all get it.
So, okay. We've been, we've been working with a shred company to get this put together, so on Saturday, October the seventh, from nine AM to eleven AM, it's a two-hour window, we'll be having a shred truck at Smyrna Outdoor Activity Center, located at 100 Sam Really Parkway, and this will be the first time we've done this. I got tickled, the guy said, are you going to limit the number of boxes they can bring and those kind of things? And I said, you know, right now, what we'll do is, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll ask people to be accommodating, you know, if you've got a pickup truck full of shred stuff, you really need to take it to an industrial shredder. You know, this is for residential use, so, you know, a couple of banker's boxes or a, you know, maybe a, a small garbage can or something like that. If you have things that you need shredded, if you'll bring it down, we'll have some staff there to help move it from the vehicle to the shred machine, but it'll be a two-hour window, that's Saturday, October the seventh, from nine AM to eleven AM at SOAC. Last thing I have, as I always do, is love where you live, folks. You know, we continue to fight the battle of littering and dumping. I got an email from my friend out at Seven Oaks this week, and he called it, the, the trash scum was back, and somebody had dropped off a couple of bags of garbage in a love seat out there, so we're working to get that picked up. But folks, we've got places to take you refuge, there's trash cans at every, you know, store we go in, every gas station we drive through, you know, please don't litter on our streets, let's keep Smyrna looking good, and anything you can do to help us, we would appreciate it, and thank you to Tony Proctor out at Seven Oaks for keeping me honest on all the stuff that happens on the back road, and all the work that he does to clean up back there. So, love where you live, and that's all I've got, Mayor.
Jeffrey L.
Nothing from me.
Raquel?
Um, condolences to Jeff Duke and his family, and congratulations to, on all the promotions to the new assistant chiefs, to the captains and the new sergeants at the police department, and thank you to Chaplain Horn for the Train Depot ornament, and happy birthday again to Mr. Bell, and then I have an announcement for a symposium that's going on, and it's in regard to the Rosenwall Schools. On September the fifteenth and sixteenth, Fisk University in conjunction with the Tennessee State Museum is hosting a symposium called Building Community, Continuing the Legacy, excuse me, Continuing the Legacy, a Rosenwall Schools of Tennessee Symposium. And since one of our parks actually has a building that is known as the Hilltop Rosenwall Building, some of the pictures associated with that used-to-be school are, or were used as, as part of this symposium, so I wanted to give notice to everyone and let them know, anyone who's interested in knowing more about the history of the Rosenwall Schools, that this symposium is going on on September the fifteenth and sixteenth, and it will be at, well, down at the State Library, am I right, Ms. Mary?
Yeah.
It's going to be at the State Library, the symposium, this weekend, so if anyone is interested in knowing some more about the history, please go out and attend that symposium. Um, and I think that's all I have.
HG?
Um, this past, past weekend, we had the Rotary Fish Fry, and I'll speak for Brian and, and Tim and Jerry and say that we greatly appreciate the community's support on that, and, you know, the thing about the Rotary Fish Fry is, is that the Rotary pours that money right back into our community, and it's, it's a good time, and I think that all of the support that's given to it is, is, is just very much appreciated. I'm sure Mary Esther's going to talk about the Captain Coos Friday night, so I'm not going to do that, but my point being is, it's just like three weekends in a row, here's big stuff going on, and then the following week forces Depot Days, and we've already referred to the car show being on Friday night, and then Depot Day starts ten, ten o'clock or eleven o'clock on?
Ten.
Ten o'clock, yeah, Saturday morning, and goes till four, and, you know, multiple vendors, bands playing, and lots of good food, too, so come on out for that, too. And as we have already referred to with the tax dollars that have come in, keep shopping local, keep your, your property tax low, and be kind, and that's all I've got.
Tim?
Yeah, I'll add my condolences to Jeff and the Duke family for their losses. Congratulations to Captains Gibson and Scott and Edwards and Durham as sergeants. It's, it's great to see the promotions that are happening. Chief, you know, we, we talk about the fish fry, thanks for your guys out there, the Honor Guard did an incredible job. I appreciate you coming out and helping us with the fire extinguishers around the grill area, we greatly need that assistance, so thank you so much.
Do we need them?
Yeah, we do need them, believe me, we, we actually did have one blow up one year, and I remember Derek Rayburn didn't have a mustache or eyebrows for about two months, so.
I just thought he should've.
No, we actually had a fire one year, too. Yeah, so greatly appreciate it.
That all?
That's it.
Jerry?
Also, I add my sympathy to the Duke family as well, thoughts and prayers go out to them. Congratulations to those that were promoted, we appreciate all that you guys are doing for us, and it was well-deserved. Couple of birthdays, obviously, Mr. Bell, a hundred years, that's, that's pretty special, so happy birthday to Mr. Bell. And also yesterday, a friend of mine that I went to school with for a long time, Raymond Morris, a lot of you may know Raymond, had a birthday, so happy birthday to Raymond. And kind of along those lines, this weekend will be the Smyrna High School Class of Seventy-Three's Fiftieth Reunion. We've really had a great... We really had a great response. I think we're close to 100 people that are planning on coming. We've got about, I think, four teachers that were invited, included Mary Esther's mom and Richard Thomas, Coach Rakes, and then Ms. Judy Clemmons are all hopefully going to be there. So that'll be Saturday night at the Smyrna Assembly Hall. And then Friday night, we're going to get together at the football game. And for those that may be watching, we will be sitting up right behind the swimming, swimming pool door. Dr. Sutherland has given us that area to set up. So if you come by, if you are coming to the football game, please come by and see us. And then we look forward to seeing the whole group on, on Saturday night. So that's all I've got.
Great. Steve?
Jerry, how many people were in your graduating class?
165, I think.
That's awesome, that you're in it, up to 100 out of 165.
Well, this is spouses as well, in some cases.
Okay. I don't think, our last reunion, I don't think we had that many.
We did.
We had three times as many graduates.
We did have that many.
That's, that's awesome. Congratulations to the officer promotions. Chief, thanks for, thanks for those promotions. I think it, it does a lot to help morale to see internal promotions like that and to see that people being, doing a good job or being rewarded. So appreciate your leadership and appreciate those promotions. Happy 100th birthday to Mr. Bell. I made the comment to HG on the way back up that I hope I'm not at a council meeting on my 100th birthday, but won't say anymore about that. Thank you, Mr. Horn, who led us in prayer. I think he's already stepped out, but he left us this ornament today for all of us, which is really nice. It's a, I guess that's a laser engraved of the depot, which is really, really nice. He could probably sell those.
He has.
He is? Okay, well, there we go. Well, that's, that's even better. If you want to see what you can get at Depot Days, there's an ornament. I don't know what they cost, but they're very nice. Also, congratulations to Smyrna High School on their groundbreaking. We attended a couple of, a couple of weeks ago. Specifically about that, I want to thank the county commissioners for, for funding that. Phil Wilson, Carl Boy and Anthony Johnson, our local county commissioners, that really went to bat for Smyrna to make sure that we were included in that funding and put, put forth an effort to, to make sure that that got done for us. So really appreciate their work. The last thing is, before we meet again, my daughter will celebrate her 27th birthday. So happy birthday, Stephanie. It's September 21st.
We're about to get to the point where we need to quit talking about how many birthdays she's had.
She's getting close. She's not 30 yet, so she's still happy, but when she gets to 30, 29, I think's the last one I get to say. So anyway, that's all.
Happy belated Labor Day. We were not in session here at all during Labor Day. So to those that help build this country and do it the hard way, we appreciate that, and that's why that day is honored. Happy birthday to Mr. Bell, 100 years old. Steve, I hope you are around the council meeting when you're 100.
That's exactly what I told him. Yeah. Yeah, I hope I am.
If I'm 100 and I'm here, that means I'm not somewhere else, so I guess that's good, right? I would rather be.
Technically, maybe not.
Yeah.
Technically, you could be like at the beach.
Well, let me tell you this. If, if, if haunting is an option, and you're still here, I'll be here.
I promise you, I won't be here. I don't have to worry about your haunting, right? To the Duke family, our condolences. I've known Jeff Duke for a long time. We worked at Winn-Dixie together long before we're in our careers we've been in, and have a lot of fondness for Jeff and his friendship, and just condolences to his family. Good friend of all of ours, Baker Rayburn, was in an accident a little over a week and a half or so ago. And glad he's healing and doing well. Send best wishes out to Baker. Baker's an insurance provider here in town, and he's, he's always been a strong advocate and a big supporter of this town council, and I just want Baker to know how much I appreciate that. Last and certainly not least, my wife and I had a little vacation this week, and we celebrated early. But next week is our 42nd wedding anniversary. So I just want to say happy anniversary to my lovely wife, Connie, and thank you for putting up with me for all these 42 years. And that's all I have.
No, you have some slides.
Oh, I have some slides. Yes, I have some slides. So Steve and I attended the traditions of Smyrna, their ribbon cutting. They've sort of revamped themselves. They had a new ribbon cutting in a new building. And so you see the ribbon cutting there. Steve and I attended that. And then rock and roll sushi. Todd always shows up at the food things, I don't know why, but Todd and I were there to help them celebrate their ribbon cutting, sort of their grand opening. And so, is Brian in there? No?
No, I didn't.
No, Brian? I think Todd and I were the only two.
No, that's you at the end, isn't it?
That's, well, that's why I've got the slide.
Gotcha.
That's Mark's wife.
That's actually a coworker of mine that was with me, Jason White.
No, it was someone in the, holding the ribbon. I thought that was Brian.
Yeah, that is not Brian. If Brian's there, he slipped in, we didn't know about it. And finally, the last one Steve's mentioned it, the Smyrna High School expansion groundbreaking ceremony. I know the mayor had a previous commitment and could not attend that, but the rest of the council was there, and it was a good day to be around everybody's school. It's where we all graduated from. The entire council's graduated from Smyrna High School. And the principal, Sherry Sutherland, there. And so we had a fun day, a good day, it was hot. But, but I'm glad that Smyrna was not left off the list, as Steve mentioned, to get the funding from the county to be able to do an expansion there at Smyrna High School. Pretty proud of that, and good to be a bulldog. That's all I have.
I have to tell you, Sherry called me after that event and wanted me to let you all know how much she appreciated the support. She said that she was looking at other pictures, and not necessarily everybody from the government came out to each one of those that were graduates. And she just said to know the local support, not only for this groundbreaking, but for so much of what Smyrna High School does. She appreciates everything the council does. So I wanted to make sure to pass that on to each one of you. I also have a couple of slides. The town is currently, has a board opening for the Smyrna Housing Authority Board and the Project Assistance Board, both with an expiring term ending in 2025. If you'd like to get involved in a board with the town, you can go online and fill out an application, and we will be appointing those boards next, so the October meeting. Want to say thank you to the ECAN, which is the Ethiopian Community Association in Nashville. And you may ask, why were they at Sharp Springs Park? They said they have such a large population here in Laverne and Smyrna. They wanted to do the event here, and it was well-attended and very exciting. And Chief Irvin, Brian and myself were there and had a really nice time. Farmer's market season is coming to an end on Saturday, September 16th, so come out and enjoy the final market of the season. It seems like it just got started, but, so last one is on the 16th. And this Friday night is our Top Gun Night Run. There are a few spots left, so if you or your family want to run, we encourage you to go online and get signed up. It is the benefit for the Kous Memorial so that no tax dollars have to be spent on the upkeep of the memorial. Mixtape, the 80s Tribute Band will be in attendance, and if you've not seen them, they are tons of fun. We'll also have, spectators and runners can enjoy grilled cheeses that'll be provided by Middle Tennessee Electric, free of charge. And then we have some other sponsors that are going to have some free food giveaways as well. So we're doing things a little different this year. So we hope, even if you're not running, you'll come out, cheer on the runners and enjoy food and fun with your family. I also had Raymond down, Jerry, to wish him happy birthday. I saw him on Saturday, and he wanted to make sure that I knew that it was his birthday, so I wanted to, and I know a lot of times he watches. I mean, every time that I see him, he all, Raymond always has a question about something we're doing here in the town, so he definitely keeps up. Also wanted to say thanks to Ride with the Guard. Myself, Steve and Jerry went out this Saturday to ride with the guard. They just want to get the community more involved and to just show what they are doing out on the base. So thank you to that. And I also want to say thanks to Wings of Freedom Fish Fry. Had quite a bit of fun on Saturday. I know you all put in a ton of work, not just on that day, but leading up to that day in sponsorships, and the ones who benefit are citizens and nonprofits in the area, and I appreciate all that you all do to make that possible. Counsel, is there anything else? If nothing else, we're adjourned.